Manchester Town Council. Before we get started here, we do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We do have a quorum tonight. We have two members, Councilman Howe, Councilman Wilder, both on vacation this month. It is the summer and we typically come across those things in the summer. First order of business, approval of June 9th, 2015 minutes. So you have the copy. Everybody had an opportunity to read through. Any additions or corrections, comments?
Make a motion to approve the June 9th, 2015 minutes.
I second the motion.
Motion second and per discussion. Any favors say aye.
Aye.
The others, motion carries. All right, then we have a receipt of the May 2015 Treasury Report. And we can handle these together. We've been doing it that way administratively. So just for matter of form, it's receipt of the May Treasury Report and the June check register.
I'll make a motion that we received the May Treasury Report and the June check register.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second. Any favors say aye.
Aye.
All right, move right along. Mayor's report. Couple of issues here. We did have a couple items just to discuss. We did have like the carnival in town here. I'm sure that the chief and town administration will hit on that, but appeared to be a pretty successful event. We had good weather. I think record crowds. So I'd like to congratulate the fire department on a great carnival. Hopefully that went well. Sounds like we had very few issues in terms of the police department. Good presence up there. Fireworks night seemed like it went off pretty well and by all accounts even from things I heard in the community, we got people out of there in about 15 or 20 minutes with no issues. And nobody's foot run over either, so that's always good. Last month I attended the joint meeting between Carroll County and Frederick County of MML that was in advance of the Maryland Municipal League Convention in Ocean City, which I attended in addition to Councilman Howe, who's not here. Brief recap and we'll get into the banner city here a little bit later. But it was pretty successful. I think registration and attendance was down a little bit as was the convention hall, but there was still some good core training and networking opportunities there. Attended a mayor's association lunch. Went to trainings and briefings on things including economic outlook in Maryland, including how to position our town as the economy continues to improve. See current issues such as municipal financial statements preparation, revenue recognition, GASB 34 update, and community policing and best practices, some of which I've already brought back and met with the chief about. So we'll have some more information on that and hopefully more people can attend those things in the future. We do have a get well card here for Governor Hogan. We're going to send along with the package, so as you folks are here, if you can please sign that. And unfortunately, we don't have our new flag here. I think that's still with Councilman Howe. So she brought it down. Actually, I brought it down to Ocean City and she's going to bring it back.
We do have, we have one that she has at the fringe, but we do have one hanging up.
Okay, right, right, yeah. So we'll have one for here and one for there. Essentially, it's pretty much the same flag, but it's a navy blue, so anyone hasn't seen it has a nice new look to it as opposed to the one that was up here with the cigarette burn in it. Which I'm assuming it was not you.
Not me.
All right, that's all I have. Turned over to Steve Miller.
We have a swearing in.
You're right, they're here. Okay, we actually, and we have ants.
That's not good.
Okay. We'll do this one now. We have two folks on the planning and zoning commission. They've been there for a while. Been there since I was there. So Scott Henderson is here and I guess has agreed to take another tour of duty. All right, so. So I'll say aye and state your name. And I'll read the whole thing. You can say aye too.
Okay. Aye Scott Henderson.
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and I will be faithful and will bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland and will support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that I will to the best of my skill and judgment diligently and faithfully without partiality or prejudice execute the office of planning and zoning commission alternate member according to the Constitution and laws of the state.
I will.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
So Steve, do you know if Alex is coming in tonight?
Can't answer that. Alex was notified. I don't know, possibly something came up at work. He couldn't make it.
Okay. We'll catch up with him. And I know he's here locally often. He's available, so. All right, good catch. Now we'll move on to the town administrator.
Okay, well, good evening, mayor and council. We'll go ahead and start with the June 2015 administrative report. Our S H A projects, I met with S H A representatives and also reps from Miller's Market on June 17th. We discussed the Route 27 Westminster Street intersection as well as the entrance into Miller's Market. S H A engineers are looking into this and as we all know, there's long range plans for the area, but our discussion centered around short term and immediate solutions for that intersection and also the entrance. Actually, I was in contact with S H A today. As Chief Hess will attest to, we've had two accidents at the entrance to Miller's Market in the last 14 days. So they are feverishly looking into what can be done temporarily out there to slow down the accidents at intersection.
Can I interrupt you before you go on to the next stuff? A couple of years ago, we talked about some alternative proposals. And I know we've done this every couple of years. In that stretch from Route 30 down to Westminster Street. And the speed got reduced, I think, from 40 to 30 after there was a fade at Westminster Street a number of years back. And then that's kind of where we've left it. Or we, the state. Could we include maybe some of our proposals are in the discussion, some of the things that were brought up, we probably have some notes someplace, but I know some of the items were talked about narrowing the white lines or having the white lines come in and wave to create a visual impediment that will subconsciously help slow people down. So I think if this result that comes back or what the state comes back with is like, well, it's 30, let's put it to 25. You know, we're still getting 80% of the people that are driving the same speed regardless of what the speed limit is.
Correct.
And we can't be in charge of 24 hour enforcement there.
Correct. Yeah, I think some of the ideas that we came up with out there on site, now of course, the representative has to take it back to his traffic engineers. But some of the short term items we talked about was, as you said, readjusting the white lines, the possibility of rumble strips. Couple other items to make the people aware, hey, you're coming up to a busy intersection. And you know, long term, we're not ruling out, S H A's not ruling out, you know, a traffic signal at the intersection of Westminster Street and 27 right there. So those are long term items.
Yeah, and I could see over the next decade that probably coming, just like I think one's going to be eventually at Miller Station. Or Albert Rail rather, not Miller Station, and Albert Real.
Correct.
In 27. But even if there's a light there, if it's green, 75, 80% of the drivers coming in or going out are still going to be going at same speed at Miller's Market.
Correct.
So the relative safety or danger of somebody pulling in or out is still the same. Maybe there's signage, you know, right at, you know, not advertising Miller's, but making somebody aware. I don't know what the right answer is.
Well, there was some talk when we met, you know, some type of warning flasher, something to make the people aware, you know, on the impending intersection coming up with the entrance. So there's things that they're, you know, that they're considering, looking at.
Okay. And that's all. I just wanted to make sure that they were just weren't going to come back with, let's go from 30 to 25. We'll assume it's going to be fine.
Right. We'll pass that. I'll pass that on.
Okay.
The Sheets project, there's been no movement on the actual building itself. We did receive correspondence from M D E that based on the data that they received in regards to the M T B remediation project, Sheets can discontinue the remediation process and abandon all monitoring wells. I have heartburn with that. We're drafting a letter to M D E. We're also drafting a letter to Environmental Alliance, the environmental group for Sheets, and express our concern. There's nothing in the, basically, the stopping letter from M D E that protects the town. And I want to make sure that there's issues, you know, that's addressed, that if this problem arises during construction or after construction or before construction, that the town has protection on our water supplies. So we're in the process of drafting that letter. The other thing that bothers me is abandoning the wells on our property. If you recall, we gave Sheets permission to drill four wells on our property. I don't want to abandon those wells. I want to keep those wells out there. I want to keep them open. And that's one of the other items that we're going to address in the letter to both M D E and Sheets. So looking out for the town's water supply.
Steve.
Yes?
Wasn't there mentioned a couple of years ago that one of the reasons they weren't going to renovate because for fear that there was something other than leakage from the tanks that was the problem?
And that's a good possibility.
So if they dig up everything, it could
Yes.
You know, release whatever.
That, you're absolutely right. And that's what we want to look ahead, you know, and make sure that once, you know, they start digging for the foundation and digging for other items around there, that they don't hit a pocket of the product and then that escapes. And then, you know, we have no recourse to come back. So, yes.
So we have no authority as far as, you know, making sure that Sheets does this?
We have enough weight that we can convince M D E to make Sheets do that.
You're onto something. We should do it until the project is completed.
Or a time period afterwards also. Yes. Correct. So we're working on that. Yes. The town hall police station bids were open on June 30th. We had six general contractors bid on the project. Breach Bill and Hellman was the low bid and we're currently reviewing the bid with our contractor and architect on that. Breach Bill and Hellman are out of Chambersburg, Pennsylvania. They've done numerous jobs in the Carroll County area, so they're familiar with the Carroll County Building Code. So I'll report back more next month on that. And my number four item can be taken off the floodplain resolution and ordinance corrections as per FEMA. That will be coming back to you folks in August. As you recall back, last month you approved the resolution. FEMA came back with some additional wording they wanted in the resolution. So we pulled that back till August. So we're, make sure the wording's correct, make sure M D E's happy with it, and make sure the county's happy with it. So I'm not making any moves on that till August. I've supplied you a monthly status report on code enforcement. Under miscellaneous items, on June 10th, Kelly and I met with Mr. Mark Ripper, the county rep in charge of the county's fiber optic system. Mark gave Kelly and I some very good information on how the town can utilize the system in the future. On June 18th, I attended the Utilities Advisory Council meeting at the county. On June 24th, Kelly and I had the pleasure of meeting with Ms. Mary O'Keefe, who is community liaison for U.S. Congressman Andy Harris. Ms. O'Keefe supplied Kelly and I with some very good information on grants and contact information. She's been supplying us information ever since we met via email, so that was, that was a good contact. Excuse me. Youth representative, as you know, Ms. Singer has graduated high school. And I would personally like the mayor and council to look into a replacement to replace her. It would be nice to get a junior. That way we, Natalie was a junior when we brought her onboard and we were pretty happy with her for two years, so. I'd like to see her replaced. Also, something else that's not on your report is members of our staff have been reviewing sections of the charter and code. So hopefully over the next three months, we'll be bombarding you with some changes that we would like to see. The larger sections of the code are pretty straightforward. They're pretty decent. The zoning section is good. The water and sewer are good, but it's the other sections that need some work done. So staff's been working on that. Excuse me. Moving right along, the June 2015 Public Works Report. Under water, you have in front of you the monthly water and wastewater status report for June. One thing I want you to keep in mind, keep your, keep your eyes on the amount of gallons per day that's treated at our wastewater treatment plant. You can see those numbers have steadily come down since we did the lining project. So we're pretty happy with those numbers. The heavy rainfalls we've had over the past several months has no effect whatsoever with the flow coming into the plant. We have one wet well at one of our stations that's going to be sealed up over the next week or so, so that ought to reduce the flow a little bit more coming into there. Our folks replaced the fire hydrant at Route 27 Westminster Street. And we did a well pump replacement at Ferry Road Well B. Under wastewater, General O and M, we did some rewiring on our root removal system. The alternating switch on the effluent pumps at the wastewater plant was replaced. And we want to welcome Mark Leister to the town staff as a wastewater operator. Under stormwater, our storm drain inlet repairs are complete. That was 16 repairs. Our operators took some training on July 9th. 11 DPW employees took training on that day. I have some action items tonight. We have the inclusive playground equipment bid. And we have the skate park pad bid. And then I'd also announce, I'd like to announce that we did receive preliminary approval from community parks and playgrounds for $85,000 pending approval from the Maryland Board of Public Works. So. Excuse me. That's about it?
Any other questions on the town administrator or public works side? All right, and the police report. Chief?
We handled 63 calls of service this month. We did have to criminally charge 11 persons. The arrests consisted of three for felony theft, one for assault, one for drug possession, one for DUI, and the other one for, five for traffic related charges. We did have three thefts, two are cleared out of those three arrests I just talked about. We had our first burglary for the year. That involved a couple of repeat offenders that moved into the community. We believe they know who did the crime. We just don't know who did it yet. There's communication going between us to try and find out who exactly did the burglary. We do believe it's drug related, but that's just suspicion on our side right now. We conducted 135 traffic enforcement stops, all complaint driven. 47 citations were issued, 88 warnings. Primary focus was North Carroll Farms. I got to tell you, most of the offenders reside in North Carroll Farms. Park Ridge, all through there. That's why the majority of the warnings came across and apparently that's not working. There was additional traffic enforcement that was conducted on Main Street. For the sake of crime, last year, the same time period, we had 19 part one crimes. This year, we have nine. The county has experienced 101 overdose cases. There have been 13 fatalities so far, 34 of which are direct relation to heroin. As far as the municipalities go, Amsted has three, Torney Town has five, Westminster has 15. The other numbers are surrounding. Manchester has zero and Sykesville has zero. We have National Night Out coming up on August 4th. We're getting a good turnout. A lot of people in the community want to help. There's going to be a good police contingent, a good fire contingent, some business people from Mamas is going to help. And I think we have some donations coming from Walmart, Dick's Sporting Goods, and Target.
Long and Foster Realtor, Miller's Market, yeah.
I got to send a thank you out to Girl Scout troop 1090 for the cookies. They delivered several boxes of cookies over to the police department showing appreciation for the officers and what they do in the community. And according to one of the girls, there were several donations from the community to make sure that they gave them to us. About it.
Anything for the chief? I do want to publicly recognize Chief Hess too. We had, carnival time's always a tough time here in 4th of July in Manchester. From the standpoint of it really requires all of our resources to be up and around the carnival grounds during, especially during things like the fireworks of 4th of July. While at the same time, there's things going on in neighborhoods and receiving a lot of complaints. So great job and good job to all of our guys to balance those two and then to respond when necessary appropriately to people that they call or there is some concerns. So that'd be something that's a constant thing for us because we can't have, like Halloween, we have somebody in every neighborhood. We can't have someone in every neighborhood and everybody at the carnival grounds. So, but I think we did a pretty good job of balancing those two things and keeping everything under control. And one thing you didn't get to, I think, just warrants pointing out here that this time last year, we had 19 reported part one crimes and this year, nine?
Yes.
So in terms of part one reported crimes, we're down a little over 50% from last year.
Yes, sir.
And last year was a good year.
Yes. Yes, we had a decline last year as well.
Okay, anything else for the chief? All right. We are moving right along. Banner City, I'm going to, I asked Tammy, Councilwoman, ask the woman, Tammy Black, I'm sorry to come in. Do you mind coming up? So I wanted you to talk a little bit and present this to the town. So while Tammy's coming up, I asked her to come in and do, you guys might, we can pass that down and hand that to Tammy. So Tammy did a lot of work. It was really instrumental in giving Manchester the designation of MML Banner City this year. So we were one of five new towns and cities in the state of Maryland to get that designation. And it's important. It's prestigious. A lot of work went into it. And it's really something that's designed from MML to encourage participation in their chapters, in their trainings, to encourage elected officials and town officials to stay up to beat on what's going on, to participate in organizing community activities and really pushing out communications to the public and to each other. So. If you could speak for a few minutes on what you did and the amount of work that went in and why this is important. But I want to thank you personally for really getting us over, getting us across the goal line to get this thing done.
It was my pleasure and an honor for the town. So just to recap on what Mayor Warner said, the municipalities who are designated as banner cities or towns are recognized among their peers as an active participant in showcasing municipal government and how it works, working together as a town to help strengthen their membership league, foster goodwill by educating youth about municipal government, maximize their MML, which is Maryland Municipality League Membership, by taking part in league programs and activities, and ensures the voice of their municipalities heard on issues relevant to the membership and in matters of legislative priorities. And so the things that we did in Manchester, first of all, there had to be a 50% or greater participation in state MML activities as well as local chapter activities. And so we had to have that validated and signed off on, and we accomplished that over the past year. We also were able to feature the National Night Out and our success and all the news articles and all the things that went along with that were submitted for approval. And then also, on May the 14th, myself, Steve Miller, and Kelly Baldwin, we had the privilege of going to Manchester Valley High School and sharing about municipal government to one of the high school classes there with teacher Beth Christman. And so that was, that was a good time. That was also featured in the newspaper and a lot of the students, I think, Mayor, one of your sons was in the class too. Did he tell you how wonderful it was?
That one's telling me.
He was pretty quiet in the class too. But there was actually a lot of participation. The teachers were really excited. And what's, I think, really, I think beneficial or valuable about this program, because I didn't realize it till I actually went through the process, was that teacher Christman said that there is, there's no, and perhaps, you know, Councilwoman Warner can confirm, there's no standard curriculum for municipal government teaching in the school system because it varies so much from town to town. So we were able to talk about the different models, especially in Maryland, and then what Manchester's model looks like and how our leadership and our organizational chart flows and how that extends into the community at large. So that was, that was good, I think, for all of us who were involved in that. And then we have to be a part of an academy for excellence in local government. So I know that several of us, I know Mayor Warner, myself, I'm not sure who all has been a part of this, but that's a great opportunity too, to learn about local government and how to advocate for the needs of the towns and municipalities on a local, broader, state level, and then even regional as it impacts through federal government mandates and so forth. So we had to participate in that and show our participation, if you will. And then be able to show that we've been working with the schools and we've had, you know, student representation and so forth and I believe some other students have been a part of the town's mentoring program. So anyway, we, we made it. We were, as you said, I believe, one of five that got in this year. And so I think it's something that we can continue to strive to be current with. And especially, I said that high school component was, I thought was really valuable and didn't realize the impact of that until we actually had completed it. So. So this is the plaque. I guess every year, like, how does this work?
So my understanding was, and of course, this is my first time at this luncheon where they give this thing out. If you qualify and you receive the award in subsequent years, you go back and you'll get like a plate.
A plate.
Yeah.
Okay. So you just have to show again kind of what your activities are?
I think you have to go through the process all over again and resubmit the things that you've done, either if there's a multi-year component to it, or that would be applicable to that year.
Okay. So a lot of the things that have already been done can carry over from year to year, but it's those activities that I just mentioned that have to be revalidated. So anyway, thank you for inviting me and
Absolutely.
Thank you for sharing about it.
Thank you for everything.
All right, so we're on to questions and comments from the community. Anybody sign up? Mr. Lou Kurzmauler? If you might come up to the mic and for anyone that does come up to the mic, if you don't mind, again, stating your name and your address. That way I don't have to try to do it and it's on to the record.
Okay, my name is Lou Kurzmauler. I live at 2510 High Crest Court. And my question, this stems from a meeting at the meet and greet, I guess, back in March or April, but the thing is this, I mentioned at the time, I would ask a consideration for the speed limit in the Carroll Farms to be changed to 25. This is for consistency only in that Susan Anne and Bert Fowler are all 25 and doesn't seem to be any problem. Some other jurisdictions around in the area are also that and it don't seem to be a problem. So I personally have had some, you know, concerns with the speed limit as it is and whatever. I thought it might just be, just to be consistent, I think it's a good idea. As I said, I mentioned it. I just wanted to follow up on this and just come forward with this.
Right, I remember you and I had the conversation. And we have talked a little bit. This is something that's come up a couple of times over the past few years where we have these five mile an hour differences in what appear to be kind of similar type roads. And I guess you could name differences between the roads, like, well, this one has double yellow line and well, this one's eight feet wider and that sort of thing. But it wouldn't hurt us to, I guess, to look and drive those roads and see you know, if some consistency can be drawn out between some of the areas. And then the flip side of that, and this, I guess, is as much as laying all on the table right there. So the concern every time you raise a speed limit is, well, if you change something from 20 to 30, everyone's really going to go 40. And 40's not
Right, right. Yeah, I understand. Yeah, like I said, it's the individual and what they do, which is
Right.
I mean, they're probably going to go higher anyway, so.
So we'd have to have some, you know, if we're readjusting things that all look similar to 25 in an area versus 20 or to 25 from 30, just have some, I guess, understanding on the enforcement and community, you know, information and side of, you know, if this says 30, then 39's not acceptable.
Right, gotcha.
Or if this is 25, 34, you know what I'm saying. But. So Chief, and Steve, can we take a look at that in some of those areas and see what?
You want to drop down to 25, right?
Up to 25.
It said 20.
It's 20. Yeah, I mean that's.
So I think what we'd want to look at is, and from our perspective, as soon as we have speed limits, the people, you know, communicate a lot, they'll write in and come in and have an opinion. And I understand your point because the surrounding areas are 25, then they'll have one piece that's 20. But there's some streets where going to 25 may not be the best idea. You know, and we're already battling
Okay, yeah.
Speed. I, I think it's worth a fresh look though. I think is the best way to put it. So why don't we? I mean, I don't exactly have an opinion. I have to go out there and sit and
I told the chief, I mean, if it don't happen, I'm not one to beat a dead horse, so this is the only time I'll be up there.
No, we appreciate you coming in. We were just looking at the way the charter's reading right now.
The way the charter reads, we have different speeds for different streets in there and then if it's absent, it's 20?
Yes.
That's the way the tracker reads?
If it's mentioned, it's different. Everything else is 1.
Right. So we have the ability to change them. But it's always worth taking, you know, a fresh look at and make an honest evaluation about, is this the right speed for this road and for this area?
Okay, appreciate it, yeah. Just like I said, if I were to just take a look and if it is, great. If it isn't, okay, then that's just the way it is. But I personally it is, great, if it isn't, okay, then that's just the way it is. But I personally didn't care for twenty and for a number of reasons, but.
I get it, I know.
You know, like I said, so here I am.
Yeah, I think when we've done things like this in the past, and it's been a few years since we changed the speed limit other than the one on thirty, is that we would try to push as much information out as we could to solicit feedback, because you change one up or one down and you ruffle feathers on fifty percent of the people.
Right, I understand.
So, let's, I mean, stay in contact with us and, you know, you can.
Okay.
Call in and, you know, to get ahold of me or.
Yeah. Now's the time to do it because that is one of the sections in the charter that we're taking a hard look at. So now's the time to, to take a hard look at all of our streets if we wanna adjust them.
Okay, well, I appreciate the consideration and thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming in. Mike Stewart?
Yes, good evening, Council. Mike Stewart, twenty-eight-seventeen Ridgely Court. While you're looking at the charter and the code, I urge you to do something to make it consistent with county standards. And I'm specifically referring to Chapter eleven of county standards, which was passed in 2013, which makes English the official language of Carroll County government. There are exceptions, of course, for public health and safety, but what it boils down to is that no one can force county government to engage in official business, either written or oral, in any language other than English. And for purpose of coordinating things with the county, I believe all the towns should adopt a similar ordinance. Think about the zoning process when you're building. You go to zoning at the county, then you come here, pay your fifty dollars or whatever the fee is, and get your certificate and go back to permits. Now, the county only has to print things in English and they'll speak English there, but if someone today would say that, you know, we need things in Chinese here in Manchester, there'd be nothing to stop it. And if you do one, you have to print them in all the languages. Go to, go to District Court in Montgomery County and sit there during the day and you tell me how it goes. So I suggest if you're looking at the code, if we could adopt something along the line of Chapter eleven in the, in the county ordinance, which was adopted, and it was in the news recently, in The Times, the new, I believe, Paul Milton at The Times, the new editor, made a stir about having it repealed, but all five of the commissioners, the new commissioners have voiced their continued support for the ordinance passed in 2013. So if you're going to look at the code, I suggest that you, just for consistency's sake, be, and be the first municipality to do it in Carroll County. Thank you for your time.
All right, thanks. Anybody else? Here, now we'll go to committee reports. Councilman Smith?
I don't have a report. The meeting was rescheduled.
Okay. Councilwoman Warner?
We're working on our committee. At the parade, we, I created handouts, about a third of a size sheet, front and back, advertising for National Night Out. I walked the parade route and gave out as many as I could for the length of the parade, bouncing back and forth the street, and invited people to come out and gave them some information about when it was. We did have a small stack of the flyers left, so we asked the Manchester merchants if they'd be willing to put them in their bags that they handed out at the carnival as well. So we got a good stack of them out to help advertise that.
Perfect.
Regarding mom, I have nothing to report at this time. The next meeting is this Thursday at Spargos, and I have yet to get up to speed with the Sustainability Task Force, but that's the top of my agenda.
Perfect. And the two councilments are, council persons are on vacation, and we're currently in search of a youth representative. Anything else for this board?
Mayor, I have two action items that we have to take care of.
Yep.
One thing also I left out of my report, it was my fault. I wanna thank Eagle Scout candidate Reed Ladder. He did storm drain stenciling on Saturday. They actually, Troop three-twenty and his group actually did eighty inlets in Manchester Farms. So I'm pretty happy with that. That information is gonna be passed on over to the county so we can get some credit for that. So they did a fantastic job. The two action items that I mentioned before that I have is for the skate park pad, and this is going to be located off of Water Street. We put it out on bid. We received two bids back, one from Bullinger and Brooks Construction for twenty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars, and one from Bosley Construction for twenty-five thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Staff recommendation is to go with Bullinger and Brooks Construction for twenty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Have we used them before?
Yes.
Okay.
Is this pad the same dimensions as the original one?
Yeah, actually, it's, it's two foot. Actually, the original one's ninety by sixty. This one's ninety-two by sixty-two. Yes, a little bit bigger.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from Bullinger and Brooks Construction, the amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars in regard to the skate park pad.
And I'll second it.
Motion seconded and discussed. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, the next action item is the inclusive playground equipment. And we put this out on bid. And the, we received one bid back. Company sparks at play. As you can see, the information that Kelly has put together, this is part of the community playground and parks and playgrounds grant, which we received forty-five thousand. The town of Manchester's going to put five thousand into it. And we're looking at Haley's Wish putting additional ten thousand. So we're looking at a, a cost of the equipment for seventy-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. As you read down into the information, we talked to Ms. Bridget Miller of Haley's Wish, and she is, Haley's Wish is willing to go and add another five thousand dollars, bringing their total to fifteen thousand dollars. Unfortunately, as you read down through there, we're eleven thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars short. Our recommendation is to pull that eleven thousand dollars out of our parks fee because it is a capital budget item. That is our recommendation. You can see what's in the current park savings account as of June thirtieth. So that's up to the council if they, the mayor and the council, if they wanna go that route.
Steve, do we have a explanation as to why we only got one bid?
No, the information, the bid was put out basically around that equipment, but the, the other vendors, you know, if they could show that they could be equal to that piece of equipment, that's fine. And, and nobody responded back to us on that. And basically all of our bids are like that, you know. We made like a certain type of dump truck. But if there's another type of dump truck out there that is equal to, yeah, we'll take a look at it. They have, in our, in our contract document, they have to prove to us that it's equal to. But in, in this case, no one bid, bid on the project, so.
So did you, did you review, and I know this playground equipment, and particularly this inclusive playground equipment, it is extremely expensive. And at a number of the conventions where we talk with vendors and they have these sort of things and reviewing some pricing. Now, I didn't go through the list of the items that we're going to put into the inclusive playground and then try to add that up and see if this number falls in there. My, my guess, after seeing the plans and knowing what these things cost, is it is an extremely competitive price.
Correct. Correct, yes.
Have you seen these playgrounds? It costs, it doesn't look anything, and it costs a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something.
Right.
So there is markup in these, in these things, but you have to buy from a couple of vendors that are out there.
So are we making a motion to approve the money that comes out of the fund, or what do we need to?
Well, I think that we can do, and just to give you guys some context, we haven't probably haven't spent money out of this fund in a number of years now.
Right. In fact, I don't know if we've ever touched the funds. No.
We approved money at one point to do some work on the lights, and then we paused and didn't spend it because we were gonna go the multi-year.
Correct.
Grant route.
That's correct.
And then rather than patchwork what we have up there, we're gonna try to come up with a solution to fix these things long-term. So, yeah, maybe we haven't, I don't, I know we've talked about it a couple times.
Right, right.
We've talked about buying a, some sort of gator or something to help the guys that are cleaning up the trash and the, empty the dumpsters, and we didn't do that either, but.
No, we didn't.
So it's, it's primarily funded by impact fees, has been there, so as, as the town really grew. And then the intent of those funds is to provide for capital items for improvement or replacement or additions as the community theoretically grew, so that you're providing services that, you know, that are commensurate with the population. So it's an appropriate expenditure, meaning we're.
And actually, it's a total of a lot coming out of that.
Right, yeah. Yeah. So all, the rest of the funding is there.
Okay.
So, and then, that, that's the staff recommendation.
Correct.
So I would support that recommendation that we, it's really up to you guys.
I agree.
And again, we, Kelly and I have been in constant contact through this whole project with, with Mrs. Miller. And she's very happy with what's taking place. She's very thankful for what the town's doing. Our pad for this, this spot is actually being worked on. It was started on today. So we're moving right ahead. We're looking at the possibility of a community build sometime late September, beginning of October. That's what we're aiming for, so.
Add that in. Yeah, I think it's gonna be a nice project. Any thoughts?
I think we should.
Give it in the opportunity.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we contribute an additional eleven thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, taken from the park service savings in regard to the new inclusive playground equipment at Christmas Tree Park.
I'll second it.
So a motion and a second, and a discussion. Falls in favor, say if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, carries. That's good. Steve, can you notify them?
Yes, question?
Can you just do a motion to actually purchase it, something like that?
So rather than appropriate it, to purchase it, can we have a second motion to make the purchase? So I guess we did appropriate, that was the appropriation.
Okay.
I make a motion that we purchase the equipment needed for the inclusive playground at seventy-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars.
I'll second that motion. All right, motion and a second. All's in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, so that, I guess now, now I see what's going on, is that we're eleven thousand, so we have the funding of sixty thousand for the equipment.
Sixty-five.
Or sixty-five, right? And we're coming in eleven thousand short, so that we're funding that.
Actually, with sixty-five, we're no longer eleven thousand short.
Is that right, Steve?
Are we eleven thousand short with the sixty-five thousand because Haley's Wish Foundation added the five?
Yes, they added five more thousand. So their total contribution is fifteen thousand.
Wouldn't this number here be sixty-five, not sixty?
Right.
This, this one I gave you upfront is what was in the original.
That was original.
Quest from, when we asked for community parks and playgrounds, we didn't know the cost.
Right.
Right.
So when we had been talking to Bridget just today, she told what the prices were, and she said, well, I can give you another five to make it fifteen, fifteen from, you know, us, forty-five from the state.
I got you. I think what the question.
And then total was eleven.
So, all right, I think the question is, I think Vince and I are on the same page. So you have local funds, five. You had Haley's Wish, ten. They've nominated that fifteen. You have community parks and playground grant of forty-five.
That was original.
Equals sixty is the original. And then, Mrs. Miller said, we have an additional five for you.
Right.
So that brings that to sixty-five.
Right.
So that went from sixty to sixty-five, but we're saying the shortfall is eleven three seventy-five.
It's actually six.
Six.
Right.
Okay.
So I should've said it's an additional, it should've been total coming out of that account.
Ah.
Yeah, it's a total of eleven.
That's, yeah.
Okay.
And that's how you did the motion, was eleven thousand.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, so.
Okay, it's just the way it was broken down, so it's, we're good.
Correct.
So our total contribution to the town is eleven seven thirty-five, but that includes the local funds mentioned at the top of the page at five thousand.
Can we make sure that's reflected in the minutes? Because I think then this memo is a little bit misleading.
I just.
It's not, it's, the way it's worded, it could be confusing.
Right, right.
I think as long as we get it right in the, in the minutes, then we should be good.
There's a couple of things to, to look at too, once we get into this. As I mentioned in my report, we did receive preliminary approval for eighty-five thousand dollars for the new lighting up the athletic field. Unfortunately, that project, you're looking at probably a quarter of a million dollars. So we have to put our thinking hats on, on what we're gonna be doing with that. The project that's right at the horizon, which you approved for the pad, for the skate park, is the cost of some new ramps. So we may have to, in the next several months or maybe even longer, look at, looking at that park service fee to pull some monies out of there to purchase ramps, new ramps for that site up there. So just keep that.
Right. But that's based on what is unsalvageable in the.
From the site, from the current site.
We'll see what we can, what we can salvage.
Correct, that's correct, that's correct.
Speaking of that, and not this was an agenda item, but the, as far as the lights at the athletic field, Musco Lighting has a pretty big presence at the convention. And I've talked to some folks there, you know, year over year in a friendly way. But I guess there, they have some, some financing options and some, some packages they can put together where they may be more experienced in pushing for some of these grants and ways to pay for these things than, than we are.
Right.
So if everybody's, you know, I guess we'd be agreeable to at least hearing what they had to say.
And that, that's a good outlet, Mayor, because my, my outlet through BG&E, you know, kinda fell through. I thought that was a good option, but I haven't heard anything back from those folks. So I'll get in contact with, with Musco, I've heard of them.
It's, it's Musco, yeah. I think it's M-U-S-C-O.
Okay.
But I guess ultimately from, you know, they're a business, so they know that towns like this or a school that's replacing it may not be able to write a check for the full amount. So they know how to, how to work through the grant system and how to finance things over, over time, slash, look at getting credits back from BG&E for changing out light bulbs.
Right.
And then coming up with a real package rather than it seeming like, oh, we couldn't write a check for.
When we're looking at a project like that, right, we wanna get all the key players on board, you know, the town, the rec council, you know, the independents, I mean, everybody's gotta come on board with this, so.
Yeah. And I think, Jen, I don't know if you hear that when we began this discussion, but the, and Steve has more history on this than I do, but the, the lighting that's up at Christmas Tree Park, you have these aging wood poles, some of which are starting to rot down beneath the surface, and some of the cross T bars we've had actually, not just the, the lighting are old and the boughs are old and it's dangerous to get there and change them, but we've had the crossbars come down. So as it gets windy and things.
It's a big liability.
Yeah, I, it's, things up there, we don't have an exact age, some between thirty and forty years old, depending on, on which ones and what different ages, but, so.
Do we need to think about bracing these bolts?
The, the poles themselves aren't bad. It, it's the crossbars that we keep an eye on. I mean, we'd look at those at least, at least once every three weeks. I mean, physically look at, you know, make sure they're okay, especially after a windstorm. And.
So, it's our highest traveled, most used piece of property in town.
Right.
Where literally every weekend, you know, you could have thousands of people in and out, particularly during when the weather's nice. And if one of those things were to come down and hit somebody, it'd be bad news.
More than replacing the lights.
Right. So that's what we've been, we've been looking at this. We have past work a couple of things. The rec, we've worked with the rec council to, with the baseball and football programs to, to work together. But at some point, we're gonna have to come up with a solution to either have them not be there or replace it and keep the high use of those fields up.
One last item. Unfortunately, Alex will not be here. A Baltimore City paramedic was seriously injured and he's still held over at work. Alex will not make it.
Hopefully, it turns out well. All right, we'll get with Alex and then lots of prayers for that paramedic. Anything else for this group? Take a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion to adjourn.
All's in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Good night.